To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you, our Commissioners. Roll call is in Grand County.
Mr. Hes, Commissioner Luis Lopez, Mr. Fields.
I am here. The rule of the agenda, the agenda changes in the agenda is in Grand County.
One change, Commissioner, we need to renew the line of nine C.
Is that the only change? One change, sir. Thank you, sir. If you have any questions on the vice, I'll entertain a motion.
Second motion, Mr. Luis Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Hes.
Yes.
Mr. Fields.
Yes, I want to thank you all for bearing with us. That only shows that humanity is still here, right? Anytime we have technology, things can happen. So consideration of minutes, our regular meeting minutes of August 6th, 2024. Commissioners, we have the minutes. Do you have any questions, any discussion? Here and back, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the regular meeting is August 6th, 2024. Second motion. Mr. Hes.
Yes.
Mr. Fields.
Yes.
Mr. Fields.
Yes, thank you. Reading the correspondence, Commissioner, committee reports, Commissioner Tony Haslam, you can go first. Sure. On August 24th, CCI had a tax and finance meeting to discuss the special session and some challenges in that bill. For like five different bills, actually, there were like 15 different bills that were introduced. And one that CCI decided to take a position on was the compromise bill. Although we wanted some amendments to protect ag and how it would be taxed and how they can win every tax. At that time, CCI tried to take a position and we didn't have votes to move forward. And we found out that we had a meeting a week later and we get yarder votes to move forward with the support position on the compromise bill. Also, we talked about Wiseman and Hanson's proposal initiative 95, which would limit the citizen's voice. And when it comes to our tax revenue, the CCI didn't support that bill. And it would require a constitutional change, which would require a two-thirds vote of the legislature. And that wasn't going to happen anyway. So our Dylan Jumper, who's our contract lawyer, said that he didn't see them having any chance to get through. So we moved on that one. Also, on the 21st of August, I attended Colorado Department of Ag meeting, their board meeting. And the first topic of concern was the high count AI and where it is at. Actually have the bird flu, they actually have two areas in the state of Colorado now that they're concerned that they have it. And they're making adjustments to those areas at this time. And they told us on that that there were no beef without testing at that point. And the only other thing that they were tracking at that time was bark cats. Because they could possibly be transmitted through the milk and got stopped on the floor with the bark cats. So that was interesting. They then gave a legislative vote, they know what they would be looking at, 16 bills they're looking at right now, they're drafting. And there's the top five concerns that will take priority in their opinion is water rights sales, rededication of requirements when ag land is dried up, and veterinary care access delay, any new bull for introduction or they don't do that. And foreign ag ownership is a huge concern right now. They talked at the end about their type of budget that they would have this year and the big cuts made to the ag department. But no jobs at this time are being impacted and they have pretty healthy reserves. They believe that they can operate at full capacity for a couple of years and hopefully they'll find out where this new tactic. Also, on the 26th of August, I attended the next tax and finance meeting. Been really been really involved in this one at CCI because we don't have detrimental fit. All of these bills, none of them are a fix-all and they're all going to be detrimental to our county governments. But much better than one away from fifty, the two ballot initiatives. If this compromise bill at that time were to pass, then the author of the two initiatives would, Mr. Fields, would pull those two initiatives off the ballot, which outside was called the compromise bill. And Wilson Hansen and Hilton and Winter and Mark Kirkmeier, all of them were in support of the compromise bill. And just so happened that that's the one that did pass. On the 26th of August, I also attended, I didn't think I'd get to, but and I had told the army personnel that I probably wouldn't be able to make that because we were having this pretty contentious tax finance bill we were looking into. But we were able to get through it quick enough that I attended the Army meeting, this was the community engagement day out of Pinyon Canyon. It's really good to mix and mingle with the soldiers out there and give them the opportunity to tell you what their experience was at Pinyon Canyon and what each one of those individuals did in their field, whether they were in logistics or in the gallery or whatever they were in. It was fun to talk to these young people and see how appreciative of the base they were. There are going to be some pretty heavy maneuvers out there between the 20th of August and the 6th of September. There's 4,000 soldiers that are going to be out there in four different cycles. And the cycles were called the task force mission training, delivered attack, defensive attack, basic attack, and then refit and deploy. And they were explaining to us how important it was for them to move by convoy from Fort Carson down to the base. That's actually a really important piece of the maneuvers as to back all that stuff and move one way or the other. So they were, that's a really big piece of their operation. I know it kind of puts us in a bind also a lot of the population. But it's really good to take it. Those 4,000 total participants at the cost of $2.7 million. They're going to be out there for nine months. That's going to cover the nine-month duration. And then there was a meeting afterward at about noon where most of the grass, former Mayor Rico was there, I was there. And I turned it, the others.
You were in the Land War's office?
And the discussion revolved around the relocation of the pipeline to some base and a lot of the responsibilities of the county is at this point. And what the responsibilities of the city are and pretty much out of the county is what it's going to have to say whether they can move that pipeline or not. And at this point, we're not saying any, because the people, kid, working, they're not real happy about. They're not going to fund it, let's put it that way. They don't care whether the Army loses or not. They're not going to fund any enforcement or accountable either. We can't afford to move it. So when they get that, we'll figure it out. Then we'll have to move forward and give that. On August 30th, PWP, Purgatory Water Corporation Board, got their meeting. It's been a very busy meeting, a very busy year for them so far, for us and for Julie and Dootson back there. A few kudos goes out to Julie Kudus and his business, been still a grant application and securing those grants and involving youth in any aspect of this day. Wherever she can fit youth in for the educational process when it comes to water and ag and wildlife, she does a really good job doing that. Some of the events that they were involved in were the Bear Outreach Project and she got a grant that she's trying to put together for bear cans around the city. Also, the Kids Purgatory Fish Films and River Plate. They got a lot of good activity out of that, High Country Fly Time. And that's on top of what else, everything else that she does. So the River Plate Art that she holds monthly to pick up trash and around the vagrants that are in the river. And that's a contentious topic down there, especially under the perfect street bridge. She has to move that with individuals camp out there and since she gets out there right back. It's just a mess. We're trying to sell that as an attraction for the city, turn it out in the town of Los Angeles. It's really tough to do that when you have that kind of vagrant problem that we have in mind too. She's also worked on the lock and pick and bar etiquette and instant implementation and new one that's designed at state statute requirements. And you can see Julie about everywhere out there. It sounds like Julie Appreciation Day. But I just got to tell you that we really appreciate how hard she works in the Purgatory Water Corporation. On the 24th, we also attended the Fisher Creek Track Chair Presentation. It was garnered, this track chair for the disabled was garnered through sponsors throughout the state. And as a wheelchair sponsor through the county and also on the Fisher Creek Board, I was asked to attend. And Disability Advocate was presented by the Senator Self Resilience. He had face paint. Julie was there again and she had her wildlife piece of it with fishing, I believe. I don't know, we can talk about that later maybe if you want to, but they were trying to test this stuff traditional grass. Anyway, it was a lot of fun for the little guys and really appreciated that. And that's what we're reporting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. And again, truly thank you for your community. It is, it'll be recognized. This past week's been raising a lot of phone calls, special session, commissioners throughout the state, constituents, property owners. See what's going to come up. And I see this modeling from today, but I think it's enough to take your report. Budget looks like, no, we don't have to. But I think Commissioner Hes did say, right, we got the compromise wanted, but thank you Representative Winters for working so hard on that. And then turn it up and move forward with that coming up. And we'll get all those results that really have to fall through the remaining section now. So we'll see what this turns out to be multi-industrial Los Angeles counties to be on our budget. That is the biggest concern that I have for that special session is how it's going to affect us on our property taxes if we don't budget for it. Councilor, Commissioner, report for this next year. So with that said, I will move on to a lot of phone calls from the TBR, Transportation and Finance Region. And we are working on the bill with our contact with Tom Olaski, our lobbyist on this bill. And we've been working with the Riverside members as well. Looks like we're going to be able to move forward with this bill if we need to. So Transportation Commission will meet in November to make a determination whether to merge south, central, downtown, and southeast. Which we are trying to avoid and giving a new region to some county so they can have their own. If we get merged, we're probably going to, the money will be allocated for the same amount of the region. However, we have eight more counties included in us to jockey for those revenues for our community. So it looks positive. I do have a meeting coming up with Tom Stocker, the number two Assistant Director for the CDO in the next couple of weeks. And we're going to visit our listeners, see what leverage we can give to Mr. Stocker to assist us in not changing these boundaries. And if we move forward, then we have the bill for secondary layer protection for Los Angeles County, which should be huge. It was millions of dollars to come down for projects for our state private, private area, just to say. On the 23rd, Farmers Passage Real Order Directors meet. It is moving on to our legislative sessions that were passed, the 10, 12, 10, 12, Senate 84, Senate 230. On different structures of infrastructure development and funding mechanisms were put in place. And we're still working out those details on how it's going to fund for a green ground for our administrative costs for the next couple of years until we look at ballot for 2026. Station identifications are still in the works for the planning. I have introduced, like I mentioned before, a cost sharing program to the Finance Committee and to the Executive Committee, which is having a little respect. So we're looking forward to that. I will be doing a presentation. Have our CCI's other district leading this Friday in Rocky Ford regarding Farmers Real. We have lots of information. Everybody knows to contact me outside of this meeting to do so. Or we're having a meeting. On the 22nd, Chris and Paul, we hear our border county district budget review and budget review. Everybody is on target. They are re-departed, they're on target for Los Angeles County. I'd like to thank all our department heads, road bridge, and our elected officials for keeping us diligent with the financials and making sure that we're able to stay on the budget and move forward in the last seven years. And we keep the right to study all the goals. So I appreciate the elected officials for the hard efforts of their staff and all of our department heads are doing so. They're keeping us on track. This past weekend, was able to attend the K-Man Festival in Martin Lake. It was the larger than ever crowd for the third year that they've had. They've been considering whether to continue it because of expenses. There's about a million dollar production for this event. And it looks like they might be ready even or close to ready for this year. So I talked to the owners to the rock on Sunday and he's looking forward to continuing the event because they got the proceeds. I want to estimate over 3,000 people attended the event for three days. So you can beat the dollar on your head what that means to our Los Angeles and local county communities. Between the town of Lina, the Char, Walsenbrook, Ford, and I was all in the city, hotels, motels, restaurants, gas stations, nearly everything. I saw a vacuum in the front of the playground store, Mr. McGowan, Shagam, we're putting on this wonderful festival. And we are able to attend the Bishop's Labor Day Parade. And a thank you to Tom Davis for carrying on the tradition. He took it over this year and for the first time in a long time, it was more than three weeks for the participants in the parade. And then also a thank you to the other organization, about like regularly made for the rodeo. At the county fairgrounds, I was able to take a bribe, I thought you were able to attend, but the Stanford cap. So that was good to see that that's continued on the tradition of Los Angeles County rodeo for Labor Day and Labor Day Parade. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. The, I want to just start like one area you were pointing. I saw on the Princeton AmeriGori Scholarship Advisory Committee Board, on the 22nd, there is going to be a gathering with any student from K-12, high school students interested to apply for that particular scholarship. So we're inviting anyone and just let's spread the word because they have plenty of dollars from this particular fund to award this scholarship. And I'm sorry, I mean, there is the Princeton Scholarship and there is the AmeriGori Scholarship. Students can go basically anywhere throughout the United States as long as they meet the qualifications and get accepted. So that's going to be on the 22nd at the binding room during that state at 7:00 PM. So pass the word on to students that are seniors, juniors, who get some information, great opportunity for all of us. And the only other addition I would bring here, Commissioner Lopez asked, our assessor, if there was going to be any interpretation of what happened with the special session. CCI is going to be going through the process and we need to identify and translate what that means for each and every specific counties. One of the things that the general consensus was that we needed to have 64 bills, one that is applicable to each county. But in this particular instance, it was a compromise bill. Nonetheless, counties are going to have to pick up a lot of one-handed mandates. For us, it could be software acquisition, it could be hardware acquisition, and it could be FTE acquisition as well. So from that, we will see what could end up happening. But that more than in our county could be losing quite a bit of revenue when it comes to the sales valuation of the county property taxes. Nonetheless, instead of the state picking up that efficiency, it's going to be just on the county. So that's going to be translated here soon. We're going to keep our constituents abreast. But just know that this special session had to deal with over a dozen bills, of which we're not entertaining. But at the end of the day, I guess we can say we ended up with the best of the non-serviced. So we'll keep you posted and certainly my concept from this group is we're going to be at the table with CCI. But we wanted the assessors to be front and center from the beginning. Basically, the ones with the formula that everyone's going to have to include the several calculations, we understand, for our county assessor. Before, there were four or five calculations for assessing properties in Los Angeles County. We could be going up to 14, 15 calculations. So definitely, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. Could be that, yes. But one of the, I want to put this in perspective because one of the comments that came out of the assessor from larger county, Pinyon Canyon, and Wild County. What they said in one of the hearings with New Raven Commission is it doesn't matter whether you are Denver that has X number of FTEs assessing 240,000 properties or you're the smallest county in the state. The calculations are going to have to be the same, whether we do 17. So it's all basically a relative, but nonetheless, this is going to be one of the challenges that we're going to have to pick up and cope with. So stay tuned for what happens to the revenue in Los Angeles County. That would be my take. I don't know about the millions that have no free attendance, we don't need to repeat that. So at this time, I'm going to call an elected official. Joey, please come for us.
Good morning. Hope everybody had a wonderful restful weekend. As Commissioners, I am Joey Ma, Los Angeles County Assessor. As Commissioners have said, we did have a very busy week last week with the special session. We are waiting this morning, as assessors, we are dissecting the bill, trying to get our brains wrapped around it. Unfortunately, once again, we were caught up in a one-size-fits-all solution, which is not going to be very helpful to rural Colorado. If you don't have any in the background, there was going to be, and there still might be, two ballot initiatives on November's ballot. We have yet to see the group that brought those ballot initiatives to the public for signatures. They have not yet gone to the Secretary of State's office and delivered their withdrawal paperwork. That has to be done by the sixth. So the clock is ticking on that. The reason special session was called was because the state and our legislatures were concerned that should one of these ballot initiatives pass, it was going to be very, very devastating to the Colorado state budget. And their thought process was all of the hard work that they have done in the last two sessions was going to be undone because it was going to cut the state budget by a significant, I believe, 1.8 billion was going to be cut from the state budget. Well, that didn't seem to be a pill that legislators could swallow, so they called special session. There was a lot of meetings that took place in a very short amount of time, unfortunately. So here we have what is, as Commissioner Lopez referred to, the best of the worst solution. What we are going to be seeing, and the governor has not signed the bill yet. There are two bills to come out of the special session. So House Bill 241001 has to deal with property taxation. Yes, we did see a large increase in property taxes in the last reevaluation. We are currently running numbers for our reevaluation for 2025. This across the state, we saw on an average about a 50% increase in property values across the state of Colorado, which was mainly due because people were moving to Colorado. We were shut down, locked down in COVID. Colorado, we're open spaces, we're a beautiful state. So people were moving from other populated areas to Colorado, buying homes for 50 to 60 to 80% more than what we had them valued for. So it increased the market. Colorado, by constitution, we're a market state, values go up. So when values go up, property taxes go up. We have seen them increase and it has been a pinch on all homeowners. We understand that I'm a homeowner. Most of us in here are homeowners. We've all had to deal with that property tax increase. But that being said, services require tax dollars. That is how government functions. We're probably going to anticipate a slight decrease here locally in our residential properties. Value will come down a slight bit. Our commercial is going to more than likely stay flat. Our industrial is going to stay flat. The other, our agricultural is probably going to stay mostly flat. What this new bill does was it took essentially the large 12, I-25, I-70 cruts, your metros, your ski resorts, your multimillion-dollar homes. And they're going to see quite a significant tax decrease come out of House Bill 241001. In rural Colorado, you are more than likely going to see your tax bill increase. Because what the state did, because they did a decoupling of school districts and all other districts. Currently, how we function as assessors and as property tax people is we have one assessment rate for residential properties. And we have all other properties had a separate assessment rate. Now we're going to have multiple assessment rates. And so they, the state thought it would be wise to decouple because they want to see more local funding for school districts. Well, in rural Colorado, 50% of your tax bill goes to your school districts. Here locally, you might only pay into four to six different districts on your tax bill. I understand the Denver metro, the Wild Counties, the Douglas Counties, the large counties, they might pay into 100 different districts on their tax bill. So the other districts might be a more cumulative value than what they paid in their school districts. But the state thought by giving schools a separate increased residential assessment rate would help support local funding. Because the state is no longer going to be doing what they call the budget stabilization factor. They did away with that during legislative session in 2023. That way, they can also help maintain state budget. So what we're going to see locally is because that decoupling happened, your residential assessment rate for our schools is increasing. Well, when we increase anything, in part of the taxation formula, taxes increase. And because here locally, 50% of your tax bill goes to your school district, you will see your taxes increase. I have talked to, I have District 12 as far as it goes for assessors. I have talked to most of my counties. We are going to see some sort of increase on our tax bills. What we are concerned, and what I am concerned, is when I send out those 2024, when I send the 2024 tax bill to the treasurer, she sends those out January, February 2025, people are not going to see a decrease in their tax bill. So the first place they're going to come is to my office. And that's fine. That's why I'm elected. I will gladly help and answer those questions. But I am going to have a hard time explaining to the local taxpayer and the average constituent homeowner why the Denver Post, the news, everything on social media, legislatures are saying and telling you that we are going to lower your tax bill when it is not going to happen here locally. And so I actually reached out to get an answer to that. And this is from the horse's mouth. I was told that this is a decrease in the increase. So as soon as I digest the law and I get to break it down a little bit more, I will be back to tell everyone what it looks like and how the cows are going to eat the cabbage on this here bill. There was another bill that was passed, which will help. We actually have, it was an agricultural bill that was passed to exempt the equipment that is used in a controlled environment growing facility. So such as greenhouse or growing lettuce, tomatoes, things of that, and a warehouse setting. Those were commercial value properties. Now they're going to be exempted because we are growing an agricultural product. Maribaldi, as I understand, was exempted out of that part of the bill. So we'll see if that still stays that way or not. But it was a very fast and furious four days at the Colorado state legislature. I actually had conversations with Michael Fields. I had conversations with our legislatures. And I'm hoping that I can continue to help educate and be a strong voice that a one-size-fits-all bill and legislation is going to be detrimental to small rural counties. Because what happens in the metro areas doesn't necessarily happen here in rural Colorado. And what happens here really doesn't happen in rural Colorado or in Denver Metro. We have very different needs. We have very different needs. And as commissioners mentioned, we are going to see decreases in revenue and value to our local districts. So our fire districts are going to be impacted. Our school districts are going to see a slight impact, but they're actually going to probably see more local revenue growth. Our ambulance districts are going to be impacted. Our conservation districts, our small cities, towns, the county. Once again, it brings me back to my point, services require tax dollars. And as Los Angeles County, we've been there, we've been through those hard times, when we could only keep this building open three days a week. When you don't have the revenue coming through, we cannot provide the services. And I'm afraid we are standing at the beginning of that path, and I don't know if that's one we want to walk down again.
One of the big arguments that they kept making, Joey, was that the Big 15 or Big 12, whatever, they were in favor of this in moving forward, because they could absorb the loss of 500 to 700,000 in their reserves. They were going to be impacted by the small rural counties. To extrapolate on that.
You are very correct, Commissioner S. We're a small county. There are 54 small counties, rural counties in the state of Colorado. Most of them have very small billies when it comes to their general operating core county services. A lot of them don't have reserves. The Denver Metro and that area, they do have millions to billions in their reserve funds, so they can absorb a revenue loss. Smaller counties cannot. And that was my biggest talking point and my urging point, and trying to educate them that the one-size does not fit all, and we can be, with the unintended consequences that this bill is going to cause in the future. Some of you will not be sitting behind that bench to see that. I, as the assessor, hopefully will be here for a few more terms. I will have to see that, and we will have to figure out and navigate how to get through lost revenue, and how to do a lot more with less, because these bills do push down a lot more work, unbounded mandates, and we're going to figure out how to get them implemented with fewer employees, because we don't have the revenue.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
At the Capitol, they know this will block spitfires in Los Angeles County, and she protects our rural counties.
They might not let me back at the Capitol. We'll see.
So this is the motto we're hearing, is don't anticipate, believe again, or this war begins again, this war of equalization, a lot more protests.
That is possibly coming our way next year, because unfortunately, the average taxpayer doesn't realize that the bill that was just passed in this special session will not affect tax bills till 2026. And we will be sending out 2024 tax bills at the beginning of 2025. Unfortunately, it's just a lot of education. I wear many hats, and one of them, I guess, is a teacher hat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me call on a message from our chair, does he have any updates? Program reporter. The treasurer. Mr. Attorney. Anyone from the board of office. Herein, we're going to move to the next session. We're going to welcome the presentations. We have a representative from Evergreen Natural Resources this morning, Mr. Michael Joy, who is the president and CEO of Evergreen Natural Resources. Welcome, Mr. Joy. And I think we have a couple of slides that we may be bringing up. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Joy. Again, I want to make clear that Evergreen does not actually have any business before the county this morning. I'm here strictly for the purposes of an update. Evergreen recently completed a multi-year process that was overseen by the Energy and Recovery Management Commission related to providing financial assurance in the state of Colorado, which I frankly think has more impact on the county regarding our financial ability to ultimately plug a band and reclaim our operating field, the rest of the property provided. It's slightly unfortunate, frankly, that the county was not more involved in that process than it is now, the criticism of the county, but of the state process, the symptom of it was entirely out of Denver. There'd be a consistent theme that the politics of Denver, both the border, or tend to leave rural Colorado out of any of the discussions or negotiations. I'm here because this was a multi-year process for Evergreen. It took us about two years to go through the financial assurance process, and it's an adversarial process. Not that we are adversarial with the ECMC, but it's adversarial to the ECMC. It's essentially conducted like a trial. The significance of that to the specific hearing of the commissioners is that everything is on the record. Witnesses are sworn, testimony is presented, subject to cross-examination, and the Commissioners Act essentially is jurisprudence. And so the information that we put into that, we're going to make heavily that, and I want to make sure that the county has some of that information, because we've been operating in the community for so long, that I think at times, people have lost track of the impact that we have. It certainly came as a surprise to the ECMC, and was a stain of the fact that Evergreen has here or up framed in some of those details. I'll bring one other comment. The commissioner of the ECMC, senior staff at the ECMC have both come to us, particularly non-governmental organizations, have questioned, frankly, whether or not Evergreen is improperly influencing the community. And they asked that question, because so many community members come out, generally speaking, in support of us every time that there's a public hearing or public conference. Not all landlords, but county commissioners. They do it for us publicly. And one commissioner approached me and raised the issue, because one of our commissioners, Mr. Lopez, the chairman, approached him at a hearing, I believe, with water issues. And said, why aren't the operators not here at the table with you? They're the largest stakeholders, and they're not here. And that commissioner came to me and said, how did you get your county commissioners to do that? I said, I assure you, we have no control over the county's commissioners. They do that because of the importance that we have to the county. Commissioner Lopez, I appreciate that very much. I'm giving you three slides this morning. They just have factoids on them. I'm continuing to read through all those factoids, but I wanted you to have them, because they're in, as I said, the administrative records. This is all the county embedded information. Fortunately, I can't read them, I must have looked at them in the wrong direction. Just to remind everybody, Evergreen operates over 2,300 wells here in Los Angeles County. During the presentation of the ECMC, we also pointed out that we only maintain about 2,000 miles of private revenue. It turns out that the Colorado Department of Transportation only manages about 9,000 miles across the entire state. We have about 1,000 miles of water lines in the state, and we handle about 2 million gallons of water a month over half of the region. It's about three quarters of which is now able to be put directly on the ground. So it goes into the water grid, ultimately going to the periphery, it's ranching. We have over 1,200 of the state classified as production pits, where most of the landlords classify as ponds out on the property. It's a considerable amount of water into the agricultural portion of the community. We employ, at any given point, about 140 to 170 Los Angeles family or, or we have a mess, there are individuals here in the community, and only about five to seven people that work for Evergreen do not actually live in Los Angeles County or in Messina. Our Denver office has five individuals here. Between 2022 and 2024, we paid $14 million of essential property taxes directly into the community. That does not include the total dollars that would come through rent revenue. It does not include things like sales tax, it does not include things like registration, et cetera. We have about 400 vehicles that we register, et cetera, for two years. I think we're anticipating over the next five years, the bed direct to the tasking will be about $40 million. Sorry, I can't see. Between 2022 and 2024, we paid over $30 million of production royalties, explicit passes to the property owners, rest of act of income. Not all of them, of course, live in the county, but many of them do. And over the next five years, assuming that the natural gas prices remain where they're projected to be, that'll be another $40 million, just over that five-year period of funding. Our operating expenses in the county are about $30 million a year. You know, the cost of maintaining Evergreen is about $30 million, just essentially people buy something. And we put in another about $10 million of capital improvements to the field every single year. So our total cost, if you will, is about $40 million. When we have had studies done on this, that is about a $200 million economic impact to Los Angeles County. We take the dollars that we generate, there's a process called the community multiplier effect, so our dollars are new, and we actually produce something. When we produce that, we spend those dollars. They certainly through the community between three and seven times. So we use a four to five x community multiplier, it's about a $200 million economic impact to the county. We essentially have no vendors outside of Los Angeles County. So if we need a part of a service that is not here for some particular reason, we'll buy them outside of the community, because that's all of our employees, all of our contractors need to work in the human world. Well, number one at the top is frankly the one I want to emphasize the most. It's part of the financial insurance of hearing process. All the way the system's worn, under oath, evidence provided, our third-party reserve engineer, think of our engineers as a model, if you will, not connected with the company, they can't work for us. We ultimately pay the bill, of course, but they come in and they assess, well, the cost of operating the field and the production that's anticipated to come from the field. And their current assessment is that the field will economically produce for another 35 years. It's been in production for about 30 years so far. And so we're not quite halfway through the economic effect. In fact, in 1990, Hayden, Evergreen One, estimated that they had about half a trillion cubic feet of renewable natural gas in that region. As of today, that number is about three quarters of a trillion cubic feet. It's actually been unperforming expectations for over two decades. We expect it to continue to perform, or outperforming expectations for another 35-plus It's part of the financial assurance process, somebody will understand what we did. We went through our field, and we mapped each and every location that we have. There are 2,236 wells. We mapped all of them. We provided the state comprehensive data on the size and location of the fields. We characterized them by whether they're flat, whether they're cutting hill slopes, whether they have long or short access wells. We mapped every single square foot of property that we operate on in the county. We provided that information to the ECMC. We calculated the cost of reclaiming all of that back to original condition. We did it three times. Turns out about 50% of our locations will cost us less than $2,500 to reclaim. The state, by the way, their estimate was 96% higher than ours. In other words, for every dollar that the state thinks we will spend, we actually spend 60%. And that's because we have integrated our company, all the employees who do this work for us, work with that for Evergreen, we own our own natural gas company. And we did not take into account the fact that about 65% of the time, the property owners that we operate on request that we leave much of the infrastructure in place. We can't do wells in place, we can't do pensions, we can't do any natural gas facilities. But these, like access roads, well paths, once wells have been removed, in particular ponds, the whole water, partners requested we leave those in place. We did not take any discount for that. We provided our estimate of costs to reclaim our territory to the state. The hearing process itself took over a year. We are probably the most studied oil and natural gas operator in the state at this point in time, as a result of that process. I want to tell you, frankly, how we are providing the state ultimately with the assurance that we are going to be nothing wrong. It's working. We did something that's not quite unique. It's been done by one other operator in the state who might have a relationship with us, we're slightly ahead of them in actually creating it. But what we have ultimately decided to do is we're creating a trust fund for the benefit of the ECMC that will be fully funded over time, provide for the ultimate plugging and abandonment of the key. This trust fund will work the same way that apparently create a trust for a child or a rancher might create a trust for the next generations. We set aside a trust fund, Bank of Oklahoma, as I understand, will be a corporate trustee, and we're going to pay into that every single year going forward for the next 35 years, as long as we operate. We cash it in every single year to make sure that at the end of the day, there's about $45 million in cash that would be in that trust fund if we did nothing, but continued operating the next 35 years. Now, we're not actually going to do that, because as we go forward and we need to plug and abandon a well, the way it works is, in that given year, if I spend $20,000 to plug a well, I deduct $20,000, strictly, not that I put into the trust. And if I don't plug any wells, I simply fully fund the trust for that. As we get into the after years, imagine yourself 20 years from now, and there's $15 or $20 million sitting in there, and we do more work than we have to put into the trust fund to be able to take it out. This will be augmented on a annual basis, the information that we provided to the ECMC for their purposes as well. And so there are third parties looking over the shoulder, if you will, to make sure that we provided out of the financial insurance to create the profits. The other thing that we did is we went over and above the ECMC rules on when the well or facility needs to be plugged, abandoned, and reclaimed. We provided additional criteria. We've told the state, ultimately the county, that if there's no technical meaning reserves, we will of course plug it. If there's not producing well that is not used to support production, that's a lot of words to say, it's not a water well. We continue to operate a fair number of wells that simply produce water. We use that water to blend without water, to make sure that the quality of water that we have is all natural for the state and our water deaths. Because of course, if there's a mechanical technical issue with the well, we're going to plug and abandon. And we also agreed with the state that if there's a collection of wells, and the collection of wells is not used enough, we would go in, we would plug and abandon, and remove that collection of wells all of the time. So the net result of all of this is, Evergreen intends to continue to be operating this in here in Los Angeles County for about the next 35 years. Very substantial economic impact on the community, and we greatly appreciate it. When the community members or the commissioners themselves, when meetings, hearings, legislation, whatever it may be, that's available, continues to voice their support for us, because that enables us to continue to operate and provide support for the community. Most importantly, I'll be with you, we provided correct funded dollars to make sure that our company does not leave any legacy here whilst we're working towards a new start.
Thank you, Mr. Joy. First of all, being here, and I think the community, you know, a lot of the communication, we invited you to come back. As your time now allows you, then we now again, to present this information very well to the community, to hear that 25 years is still on the horizon. Very, very motivating words, Mike. And by the way, thank you for your relationship with me. I think all the agencies that you know, whether it is about Evergreen or Calvert, you know, they're all very appreciative of the entity that you operate. And the commissioners, however, you have a floor to you for any questions?
Yeah. So, I'm hoping to help with our partnership executive. And that's with CBT.
So, I'm hoping to help with our partnership executive group, and that's with CBTW and DLN and all of those different acronyms that are there at those meetings, and we talked about wildlife corridors a lot, and that's what we do at our festival in this year. And one of my questions to them when we were visiting about this was, you're going to put these corridors in stone, and you're going to limit what they can do in those corridors to one, one well per acre, and then what happens when the wolf makes it to one of these wildlife corridors and forces them out of that corridor into a new corridor? Then will you reopen the one that you just currently shut down and close this one down? And they said, no, absolutely not. I said, how's that fair? When it's a corridor down, it's going to be in five miles away, it's 10 miles from it, how's that going to impact? What would happen there?
For us, it's not clear. The state is going through a cumulative impacts assessment at the moment. I'm certainly to be one of the parties providing testimony, at least as it relates to this community. One of the issues we're bringing forward to the commissioners is that this field was developed in the late 80s through about 2000, before 2008. It's essentially fully developed, meaning that the parameters of it are now defined. When we put in a new well, what we do is go into the well, by the way, this is the same for whether it's oak or whether it's green energy, our operating practices are all the same. We go into existing well owners who are able to complete new intervals or to recomplete existing intervals. So we essentially make new wells out of the infrastructure that's already in place. We've said to the state, we really do need to look at this differently for things like wildlife. There is a little back in the shadows, the presence of the industry here has bolstered wildlife. I am not suggesting that wildlife next natural gas wells, that would be ridiculous. What I am suggesting is wildlife like water, of which I have 1,200 ponds, West of I-25, put one and a half billion gallons of water a month around for that wildlife. Freshen State Command, they did an assessment of one of our outfalls, they told us we had to shut it down. Reason we had to shut it down is they found sensitive species in one of the creek drainages. There were small fish, they were indigenous fish, with a very healthy environment. We had to walk them up the stream from where they found these fish to our outfall. We said, if we turn off the outfall, you're a fish dammer because it's our water that's only sourcing. So we presented this at the state, frankly, times they knew not this, but when it comes to things like wildlife, when it comes to things like wildlife, corridors, they're not applicable here. I can't take credit for this, frankly, my predecessor, pioneer, our successor, Evergreen One, worked very hard, the property owners, to put our wells and our little fishes and our access rivers in places that contoured into the lake. So that really disrupts wildlife. I was out on the novel ranch last night, as a matter of fact, as I was coming in, several productive, sorry, several of our production ponds are in these large ponds, and there was a herd of about 150 gals, wilding in one of our production ponds. People just off pond. We had a state came to us about six months ago, and they were going to find us for a drip discharge, a couple gallons of water that flowed into a pond. And the fine was going to be augmented in two or three times because it was a sensitive wildlife act. It's slowing the power pump. So for us, it's more production, but we can't shut that down. So because we have been here so long, because we've worked with the community, we continue to work with you, and with our ranchers, we don't have any of the issues that they have if you're up north and been trying to establish wildlife corridors in well county. Yes, they're not available. And whether we can get them to listen to us or not, I don't know, it's a long answer, but it's a question issue.
Yeah, so the DNR director, Bill Sack, I had a conversation last week after the meeting, and he said, I want to address one of the comments that you made that you'd ask people to create critical habitat, and I have pictures to prove that. And so we're advocating on your behalf.
Be official. But we, you know, we have to think that it's there, we're advocating on our behalf, not other companies' behalf, but other communities' behalf.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing for the ranchers, for this water and the critical habitat for our health and all the wildlife that are up there, so.
Joy, thank you, thank you, and thank you everybody that's a resource to be a part of our community for so many years. Many years I've been able to, had the opportunity to testify for many bills and many opportunities to visit with our legislators and regarding oil and gas production for Los Angeles County. I've always clearly stated that however, I do not work for a natural gas industry, and represent Los Angeles County, and the severest taxes that were produced for this community, which helps now is our question, way before for our community, for every department that we go, also for the grants that are available through Department of Local Affairs, which Mr. Hassel, a board member of the EIAF, opportunities, and then those grants have given us millions of dollars over the years from your industry, so we thank you for that. But it makes it easy for me as a commissioner to testify in favor of these, because we have operators such as Evergreen Natural Resources because they run their program and their operations so tidy, clean, and from what I can tell, I don't get very many complaints whatsoever regarding their operations. So I thank you for that, thank you for being a part of our community, thank you for coming today to do the presentation for our community. Maybe in the future, we can work with the city and turn that better, and maybe having a lower production price for this community and go to tie into a contract now for years to come, but a period of 35 more years of having production in this community, that is in the future for the city to turn that, to what I take on as well. Thanks again for being there.
Absolutely. I'm always available for questions now or any other time, always in second invitation, by the way, if you come back, someone I need to have a better.
I go along with the trust fund that you say that you're forcing to establish, does that take advice in real recognition bonds or are you trying to give them to us plus a reason?
So it's a very good question, sir, the entire process of financial assurance is initiated by the state because there was a recognition that the amount of bonds in place would be inadequate to cover the ultimate reclamation of the field if a company were to set the abandonment. By the way, that's interesting. Evergreen's reclamation bonds right now are at 1.75 billion dollars, and on our balance sheet, submitted auditors financials to the state, we estimated that actual reclamation loss would be about 12 and a half. So 1.75 is significantly less than 12 and a half. I mean, also, by the way, we don't have any abandoned wells, never had any abandoned wells, we've always been able to plug and abandon. What we agreed to do, so the financial assurance process is intended to replace them, so once a company has gone through the process, whatever bonds they had in place will go away and new ones will be put in place. The expectation for most companies is that the amount of that bonding would go up. What we agreed to do is we agreed to leave our existing bonds in place until there's two times that amount in the trust fund. So if our bonds are at 1.75, you have to be just under 4 million cash in the trust, and then you will actually carry that bond anymore. And the rationale behind that is, once I pay that bond premium, I never get that money. And that bond is only good for a year. They continue to run and renew year over year, but I pay that bond premium, at the end of this year, that bond will not be held, it will not fail to plug and abandon wells, that premium is gone, and I start again, over and over again, because that money's essentially lost. So for us, provided assurance to the state, again, we agreed to leave the bonding in place until we have twice the amount of cash in the trust.
Well, once again, thank you so much. Welcome, and as we go through the process, you know, a lot of the questions later on, as we're working through the fire mitigation on Spolstra County, I'm going to get a conversation with on the road, please, more to have, because, you know, as we know, that drought is upon us, and certainly with the resources that you mentioned, that is one of the commodities that we, the county, the DNR, the fire department districts can actually partner in collaborating.
So, as you may not know this, but Evergreen currently has a beneficial water reuse plan pending before the ECMC, and one of the hallmark reasons for that is to be able to provide wildfire mitigation access to the fire departments in the counties. So in addition to that, we also, we have an operational control center at Evergreen, I'm not sure how many people know this, but we are the backup resource for the county in the event of an emergency. So if your emergency facilities go down, I assure you ours will not. We have not been in place, we have all ponds in place, we have 17, I think, kilo excavation locations out in the canyon, we're starting that, we provide that information to Sheriff's Department there as well, it's reasonably well-known, we actually provide Sheriff's Department access to the area property. We have about 4,500 acres out there for the Sheriff's Department, sometimes used to investigate criminal activity. Two years ago, there was an individual who was engaged in criminal activity in Denver to a shop that's up there, who owned property up in Upper Lake Canyon, Sheriff's Department, the FBI, and state police actually staged on our own property. So those types of issues, and they are just too numerous to pump into the county at this point, we work with the county all the time.
So the emergency management has made that come home to us that during fires in our summer, your facilities are available to us, maybe staging or ready for our residents or relocate them or the services, thank you for that.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Joy. The next presenter that we have is we're going to call on the Fire Department Director, this name goes out, welcome to the morning. How are you?
Good morning. It's taken that to me.
And if I may, I'm waiting for this, I invited Miss Gonzalez, and she's going to come today to give us an update, especially the board member, I always like to see our director for the health department, and we talk about different issues, especially now that our school seasons are starting back up, and moving diseases and a little bit for the world. So thank you so much.
Well, good morning, thank you for having me today. Kim Gonzalez with the Fire Department, Los Angeles County. We're going to talk about a few different topics today, just, you know, avian flu, bird flu is on the conversation over the past couple of months, so we'll start with that topic. So we call avian flu, also known as bird flu, H5N1, is known and spreading in birds across the states. Last year, you know, we saw some cases in wild birds, or for most wild case in a bear because they hate the carcass. So we are seeing spill over and different species getting the virus. Well, as we see throughout the state, you'll see wild birds on this slide are the primary spread of the virus. You'll see that through migration patterns, you'll see it now in poultry, which we've seen for many years. Now we're seeing spill over into dairy cattle, not beef cattle, but dairy. And the reason for the spread is you're having these wild birds actually either in their food troughs, cows are very curious, as we all know cows, they want to smell the carcasses. So they're breathing in those pathogens, which is then how they're actually getting the virus from the wild birds. Now there's conversations where we're seeing the bar cats, wild cats, fowl cats getting contaminated while they're getting either from, again, eating the carcasses of the infected wild birds, or they are drinking the milk of the dairy cows that potentially have the virus. There's no conversation as to whether the cats are spreading it from cat to cat, you know, cattle, dairy cattle are spreading it from cattle to cattle, but there is no spread from human to human. So the way humans are actually getting this is how they're either touching contaminated, whether it's milk or any contamination on the facilities, it's environmental, they're breathing in those pathogens. So as we see the spread in the dairy cattle and the poultry facilities, they are recommending that animals be monitored, but then also that they are directly feeding. This slide shows that there's other ways of spread in this bird flu notches with the migration of the birds, which you see through transportation. And Department of Ag jumped on this at the beginning of the spread of the dairy cattle, with the dairy cattle becoming infected with their, the bird flu. So you'll see it can be spread, you know, in transportation, whether the cattle are being moved through different facilities, and then there are very strict precautions put in place that these animals had to be tested before they were transported to other facilities, because you were seeing infection spreading from facility to facility during that time in other states.
And didn't Colorado shut down, you understand, traffic?
Yes.
Or the area?
Yes. So Colorado was on top of it very quick, and I think that's why we've seen very few facilities infected.
So, Kim, on this, you know, when it comes to migration patterns, we have to be able to get Director, and we have a lot of questions for her to go into our research on, their migration patterns of birds, I mean, they go all the way down into Mexico, and apparently there's not any truckable infection on that side of the border, nor recently in Texas, Colorado is not beginning yet to settle up this whole thing? Is that kind of what I'm understanding?
I didn't hear that, but.
Okay. And I stand to be corrected, because on one of the meetings, she did say that Colorado was starting one of the largest impacts.
Yeah. And I think also because Colorado is very diligent on testing, and so we wouldn't know if we had the actual infection in our community unless the species were tested in the state.
Can you tell us what the symptoms are and how long they last with or without any medical procedures?
It's very mild symptoms, a lot of conjunctivitis, which is odd, they're seeing like pink eye and conjunctivitis, I think they last like up to five days. Tamiflu is working against this for individuals, there is no vaccine for this individual virus. So it's common flu, you know, but more conjunctivitis, very mild symptoms. There have been, I believe, 10 actually confirmed cases in Colorado, and one in Michigan, two in, sorry, one in Texas and two in Michigan. Colorado has tested over 137 individuals, and you'll see on this map here, you'll see the number of states that actually have confirmed human cases. So it's very unlikely, and again, it's not spread human to human, we're not seeing that, you're seeing more of that, more of the viruses in other respiratory systems.
So this isn't so severe that it would be a pandemic type?
No. So one thing, yeah, one thing that is severe is, so when this virus hits a poultry facility, it's catastrophic to those birds. When it hits a dairy farm, it can spread through and then eventually it becomes, it leans its way out and they're out of quarantine, and it'll work its way out of facility. So our poultry facilities are seeing more impact, devastation and cost, and then our dairy farms, but we're seeing a lot of, you know, cost associated with having to mitigate this within the facilities on both ends.
Pigeons.
Isn't it?
Pigeons.
Yeah.
Terrible, terrible.
And so this slide, you'll see a statewide summary, this is as of August 23rd, because they do update everything on Thursdays. So total counties affected in Colorado, whether it be commercial or backyard, 117. Total premises in these counties were 38. And then you'll see the number of birds affected in Colorado is over 8 million, and your backyard poultry is 16, over 1,600, and then your game birds is over 15,000. So you see how it affects your bird population more.
So in the commercial changes, are these being determined?
They do. They do, yeah. And so I think that's why last year and, you know, potentially this year, we saw an increase in our chicken in the by the stores, because they are having to actually kill off all these birds because it is catch shot to them.
And then lost some of them?
No, so this slide's gonna show you here, in twenty-three, we actually confirmed a wild, a red-tailed hawk and some model case in Los Angeles County. Again, that's how they were sent off to be actually tested for it. So we did confirm it across, in the city limits and outside city limits. Well then, in Orford County, we had a black bear confirmed. That's the only confirmed cases we have. And to date, twenty and twenty-four, we haven't seen it. And we haven't had any calls on any die-off, we usually work with CBW to help us if there's any potential cases, and then they will help us get those cases up to the state. It's, and we may see more as we, you know, go further in through migration, but I think it is time to advance to give our recovery of our direness.
Thank you so much for this information, because I was receiving calls that this could possibly spread to beef cattle. They were worried, you know...
Yeah, our beef is safe to eat, our milk is safe, since it's pasteurized. It's not spread human to human, you probably get it through environmental contamination. So it's, I would say, this is nothing really for us to worry about right now, it's time in our town, you see? Now we'll move on to what we do have coming for twenty-four. It's respiratory season coming. And you know, since Halloween's coming, and we do multiple lives. So, but as you know, as September brings, not just changing leaves and seasonal flavors, it also brings us respiratory season, flu, COVID, and RSV. So this is something, you know, we wanna talk about, we have kids back in school, we have college back in. That's where we see a lot of illness the first two, three weeks of school, and we've already been seeing it. So not only will we see just these three viruses, we'll see strep, we'll see common colds. So just something to look forward to as we go into the fall season. And so respiratory season typically runs through late summer, which our season, it kinda changes, we've gotta change too. So we're starting to see it early, and then it'll go through March. We typically see those higher rates circulating during that time, but all year, we've actually been seeing a few cases of flu and COVID and RSV. So it doesn't go away during that time, but it's more prominent as we come forward. This slide shows, you know, just an image that is just guidance on how we can prevent these illnesses. So getting vaccinated, there are vaccines for all three of those illnesses. COVID does have a new variant vaccine that we should be getting in September. Our flu vaccines come in September to the health department as well. And so, and then RSV, we are referring to our pharmacies and physicians for that vaccine, so they can make sure that they're eligible for that vaccine.
So what is the optimal time to get that flu vaccine or any of the vaccines?
In my personal opinion, I usually get mine in October, November, to get me through a little bit further.
And would you say to get you through a little bit further, is that about six months period or?
Did you say six to nine months? So, and you're gonna see a lot of, usually February, March, we still see cases. So that's why I say to get us a little bit further along the next year. So other precautions we can take though, is good hand washing, you know, making sure you have clean air, good ventilation, and you guys are getting new HVAC systems, you know, that's gonna help. Some facilities put in like scrubbers and their lines and ceilings. We have some of those in the office with the nursing rooms. Having, make sure you treat the individual if they're sick, stay home if you're sick. Those are, there's a lot of key factors we can actually put in place other than vaccines to prevent illnesses. Then we, you know, we wanna make sure that even if you are sick, you stay home. If you have fever and you, that you don't go to school, don't go to work because you are straddling infection during that time. We do have COVID tests available still at the health department for individuals to pick up if they choose to. We do get those free from HHS back east, so we've been giving those out throughout the year. When we see peaks, we actually see a large influx of people coming in to do those tests, which we are loving because people are, you know, taking precaution and be careful with their family members or coworkers. And so, just making sure we do layering effects, every day prevention. And then just be respectful of those individuals that actually, you know, do choose to wear a mask in public, or choose to wear a mask in Thursday. You know, please be respectful of their decisions as they make those. And here you'll see the different vaccine recommendations. influenza for anyone over six months, and older COVID vaccine, everyone over six months as well. And then RSV is recommended for those adults seventy-five or older, and then adults sixteen to seventy-four with increased spirit illness or autoimmune disorders. And then the next slide, you know, just your basic whole checklist, you know, that's why our homes, our farms, let's get our vaccines, that's, you know, prepare for fall. We just have to welcome it into our natural environment as we go forward. And then, one other thing is schools are back in too, nurses will be checking vaccine records, and it looks on here, is we have school vaccinations as one of our goals for internal child health this year, and working with our schools, so we'll see a lot of childhood vaccines the next couple of months as well.
Can I just add a quick question about our former HR, a person who used to keep COVID tests hidden. She used to leave us COVID tests, or maybe it was that's the...
Absolutely, quick one tomorrow. Yes, and thank you for letting me at that. If there is, if there is any business or organization that would like the health department to go to their facility to actually do flu shots, please let us know. We do go to businesses rather than having everybody come to us. We learned that that actually is a lot easier for employees and businesses. So they're allowed to take time off work, and we have to help the community.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez, anybody else? I wanna thank you for being here, certainly as we go through the flu season. We work many times, it takes, and we wanna have great things here. Hopefully by that time, this bird flu, whatever we're having, it's shot, you know, certainly. And then for listening, a lot of those questions that we have, we are getting quite a few from us. And my understanding was that at the state fair, it was absent of any poultry, any dairy animals. And so, I did go, certainly I got a phone call actually asking us if we did at the county level, which we did, we had a meeting for that county fair. So, but thank you for the information.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez, and please send a big thank you to the health department, your team, everybody that works here as a board member. I'm able to see the inside workings of this organization every four months when we meet, and advocating for them, this group, because they do so much for this community. They do so much environmental, protecting of our youth, of our elderly, and the children, the newborns of this community, the programs they have in place that people only think about when they're here at the department. And after coming out of COVID, and that's all they thought about at the department, was COVID. It's really nice to be back on the, on the other side of COVID as we move forward, and build a kind of new presentation like today, present, and is a future work. But I will stay on the board of health, and you're seeing me from time to time advocating for revenue for the health department as we move forward. Plus, our new building that is being worked on in the works for Orford County, that is still in works for that community as well, for that department. There's so many things in just, you know, vaccine, the shots, we have so many of the programs for the Hula program, and early learning and education for the youth and our elderly. So, Kim, thank you for mentioning the health staff, I'll do that in a short.
Yeah, can you just talk about one more thing if you want? So one thing, we just received a grant from Delta Dental that we're working with Hula and the health department partnering together, is offering fluoride for children and dental education in schools going forward, and child care centers. So our nurses will be doing the fluoride team, whether it's in the health department, we're going to prepay K and first, and to the primary schools. So, there's a lot we can do just through time and seasons.
And this is a model, thank you, all the years you've been there. Nancy, I'm not joking, Nancy, all right?
Do me a good one.
Been there for a little time, thank you for keeping track of all the funds and working for the department.
Well, thank you for having me today.
Thank you, have a great day. And pardon me, we have a health presentation this morning, are these, I'm gonna call them Twin Dad Lake Ranch's representatives, good morning.
Good morning. I don't have a flex coat, but I do have a handout for you.
Sure. I'm working right at the table.
For you, so. Start here, pass those around. This is the same thing I'm gonna be talking to this morning. My name is Ellen Francis, and I live on Twin Dad Lake Ranches. I'm also in the POA board as vice president, I'm also a Fisher's Peak volunteer firefighter. And so I do some work with Twin Dad Lake Ranches that I wanted to share some information with you. Our board is looking at applying for the Forest Restoration Wildfire or wildfire risk mitigation, which I would just refer to as Curb Mark Point Forward. And what we're requesting from the commissioners today is a letter of support. If you have any questions about our project, I would appreciate your feedback on that. Twin Dad Lake Ranches, to refresh your memory, we are located right over here on the inside of twenty-five. We're about, sorry, I'm just a little bit nervous. Three thousand four hundred acres altogether. We have over twenty-one miles of road. And we've got ninety-six parcels with about fifty-five homes located in Twin Dad Lake Ranch. We are served by Fisher's Peak volunteer fire department. The north border of our ranch shares, well, shares with order with Twin Dad Lake State Park, which is really important to our project. On the west side of our ranch is River Ranch down in Long's Canyon. And Long's Canyon Creek also runs down through there, which is an important consideration. And to the south, we don't share a direct border with Santa Fe Trail Ranch, but it's not too far from Santa Fe Trail Ranch from there. In reviewing the Colorado Forest Action Plan, and then I do not read all of the sub-pages of that report, but I did try to hit the key points as it relates to Twin Dad Lake Ranch. You know, Twin Dad Lake Ranch is in an area where it's considered a high priority, not the top priority, one hundred percent, but seventy to hundred percent differing degrees there for developing strategies, for protecting the sub watershed that we are part of, and reducing the fuel burden in the case of wildfire. So, overlooking, we'll try going through what our goals are. In the last two years, Twin Dad Lake Ranch POA has held several events, educating our property owners on different things such as it's legal, how to do mitigation, home ignition zones, fire ground, their homes, how to spot smoke and things like that. So we've been very active with our group. We also have been actually conducting home ignition zone mitigation assessments around people's homes. We've done several of those, both with the Forest Resurfaces from Colorado State, but then also with the fire department. We mitigated and shipped alongside three point five miles of the main road just using volunteers and a very small budget. Doesn't sound like much, but some of the terrain is kind of steep and hard, and we are volunteers. So, but we are making progress, is my point. We've also created two staging areas for firefighters within our ranch. One of those staging areas can also be used as a landing zone, which is really important because sometimes it can take, depending on how the roads are, it can take anywhere from twenty-five to forty-five minutes to get drive back to where Dad Lake Ranch.
So far, the interruption, this landing zone, that it has to be approved by the the admission of fire, state wide, and or the FFA, I mean FAA?
No, no, it is not an official, we don't have to have lights or something, or anything like that. This is just for life for life, or also for smoke control, if they need to come in. So, although most likely they would probably...
I have a question before you too. You said that earlier in your statement, identify as a seventy to a hundred percent, or who identifies?
The Colorado Forest Action Plan on twenty-five. Yeah, we do that. And when I say seventy to a hundred percent, I'm gauging that based on the color usage that they were using to identify the areas of the highest priority. So we are not a red zone like in some areas on the San Francisco, so that area on the western, far western half of Los Angeles County. But we are, we do have orange and yellow and some colors in between. Anyway, so, so looking at graduated scale up to the side of that map. Think that might be on page twenty-five, I'm gonna think about that. Okay.
I'll be in the office on twenty. Whoever reading it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But thank you.
It is lengthy, it's got a lot of information in there. We also built an evacuation route that can be used for ingress of emergency personnel, as well as egress for residents. So, we, so we're doing a lot, we're really trying to address a lot of different factors on a very small budget. Currently, right now, what we're working on is upgrading and replacing all of our street signs along our companion road. And that's, that's fantastic, what we've done so far is just very exciting. Okay, easily entertained, but still. Okay, we're also actively working on identifying a second evacuation route for ingress and egress for firefighters, hopefully through the state park. So that will make it very useful for mutual aid to come in in case there is a wildfire in that area. We're also continuing the HIC assessments, of course, and we're continuing educational opportunities for people. And we're also working on achieving our firewise status. So what we need help with is funding, of course, everybody has, but the 401 grant does offer that funding opportunity. So, the goals, so that you understand, the goals for our project are to strengthen our fuel breaks. And I doubt we're talking about the roads that run through the branch, we're doing mitigation thirty feet from the center of road to each side of the road to widen that fuel break, to hopefully give firefighters their opportunity of suppressing the fire so that it doesn't blow on through. We also are encouraging property owners to continue their own mitigation around their homes to reduce the threat to values in Twin Dad Lake Ranch. So, and some of the other benefits of achieving these goals would be to protect wildlife habitat, of course, protect our sub watershed, which is really very, very important. And with it, we'll reduce the probability of wildfire going to other areas that may not have as much mitigation such as Santa, the southern part of, or the northern part of Santa Fe Trail Ranch, over here in the River Ranch area. If we are awarded this 401 grant, we would partner with the Wild High Youth Corps. I've already got confirmation with them that they would be working with us on this mitigation. And I mentioned the thirty-foot mitigation on each child. And we would also have chicken events for our residents to encourage them to... to encourage them to continue their mitigation. We do have a lot of homeowners doing mitigation right now around their homes within the last two years. But one of the frustrating aspects is once you limo up all of these trees and everything, remove the underbrush, then what you do with it is a lot of fuel. So the shipping is, seems to be the best solution, but again, there's a cost involved in that. So, so Trendadel Lake Ranch is requesting that we obtain a letter of support from you that we can attach to our activation. And I guess my question for you is, do these goals and possible outcomes align with the goals of the county? And if not, is there something else that maybe we should be focusing on or thinking about as we're going for that?
Let me, thank you so much for the question. I think the, as you go into the Colorado Forest Action Plan 2020, which is a certified document, that that's kind of the, the true north for your community, which is really great. And I think for us, not being a firefighter, as long as the goals and objectives benefit the, the property owners association, of course, is going to benefit the county as well. With, as we heard, as the DAX plays, who knows what's going to happen there for our special businesses. In my mind, I'm just going through the dollars, what's going to happen to our Fisher's Peak Fire Department? With all things in mind, absolutely, I think it's in the benefit of both of our entities to work side by side as support one another. Because if we can actually do some, you know, one more thing that we do in most businesses is a reactionary response. But if we actually plan ahead, it's, it's going to be that much more beneficial. So from my perspective, as a firefighter, that I really welcome this information, really great. And I would also ask that you get a letter of support from the state department because they're, they're your neighbors.
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
And again, as you mentioned, you're actually working, intending to have this second evacuation route. I mean, that's so important to actually define that. And once you go through that, and then of course, what does that mean to the entire county? So from a perspective, as one individual, I absolutely welcome and support your information.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, baby. And all here for this ceremony is more than a mission. Fire safety is probably one of the highest priorities in the country. We, mercy management is more important than all the health, of course. Something that we need to balance, where we really support, support quite water. It affects everybody, especially where there's a fire. And how do you bring in the whole health sector as well? With the air, you have to, for our other investments in the community, the loan oxygen, for power, you know, those forces that are running, needing medications or the equipment to operate from the power source when the fire is hit, easily those resources. So I would want to support anything that you could, please from us, provide better support. My question to you is, what's the amount of the rent that you're going for? And will that be sufficient for the organization?
So right now, we are obtaining bids from vacation specialists to come out. But we're looking in the ballpark of about 270,000.
And also I would recommend that we give them our mercy management. Joe Rogers.
Yes.
Is it that? And then we can, and for us to assist you in that, if you're going in, for that letter of support and you type in that. Again, it has to go through formal procedure.
Yeah.
And come to us in the gym. And I, thank you for being here for your request. Thank you for the email. Thank you for the permission to do this presentation, which you can see has been very beneficial because this information really drives forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, and we had a communication from the Department of Health for the President Richards. So if you have a thing about a letter of support that you kind of prefer, say that to Wes and we'll just, we'll just refer it and then we'll agree.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
You do look a bit nervous.
That was good.
And that brings us to the next section of public comment. And again, sincerely, what an interesting morning it has been. Let me call public comment and remind us, remind the speakers that you have three minutes and the board will not be able to make any comments on that. So certainly let me call Mr. Adam Boss. On line. Mr. Adam Boss. Well, we will come back to that in a little period of time. Mr. Rico.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Chairman Lopez, Mr. Howard, Commissioner House, other Commissioner Lopez. I was recently asked to become a member of the Colorado 30 Group. Colorado 30 Group is intricately connected to all branches of the military in Colorado. Information that gives you some additional information, but it is group, it actually does. It was formed in 1978 with 30 members, but has expanded to over 150 members since then. With membership from the retired military, businesses, and elected officials. The purpose was to become a connection for all US military, army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, and the new space command at the local communities, where they're willing us to spend time and effort on national security, defense issues, and concerns of local military installations. The Colorado 30 Groups works with area commanders to assist them in fulfilling their missions and hope by creating understanding and education between military and civilian leaderships throughout Colorado. I accepted the invitation except that the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County needed a seat at the table with my concerns for the military and especially people dealing. You know, sometimes we're busy civilians. We feel insulated from what goes on in the military and the world. We hear issues from Russia, China, North Korea, and others. But do we really understand what these adversaries' intentions are? I want to become better informed on these issues. The world currently, and has been for some time, a tinderbox. And we are seeing foreign and domestic idealism spreading. I will very often report with this, with what this group is doing is we're connecting with the military and some of the highest goals. Next week, I will be attending a special event in Denver for a 9/11 event hosted by Governor Pence and Denver Mayor Mike Johnson. And actually, there's going to be three special credentials at that event. One of them is going to be A.J. McNastor, who's a national security advisor, 2017 to 2018. He's a retired US Army lieutenant general of U.S. armed, I think during that time. Also Jeremy Mash, Chief of Staff, Secretary of Defense, and the Director of the CIA from 29, 2009 to 2013. He's also NBC News and MSNBC National Security Advisor. And also Tom Sanderson. He's co-founder and former director of C.A.S.I.S. Trans National Free Threat Project. So I said that is some of the stuff that I will be getting informed on. And as time goes on, I'm excited, we'll probably come back and mention those. But I'm ready to be serious.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let me ask once again on the sign-up sheet, we have Mr. Adam Boss. Let me call on anyone online that would like to address these board of county commissioners. We'll have three minutes. Bless your hat, unmute. See, we're going to move to the next one. And I think that this time it would be proper to, I'm going to call for small raises. See, I would be upset.
I'm going to make the motion to take five and a half minutes.
Thank you.
So.
Recording stopped.